...grade level, but they had made a tremendous amount of progress. So we were, you know, looking for opportunities to recognize students in those ways.
So that would be great, your next presentation, to add those things in. Because I think that's wonderful, to be able to add those categories in of kids. Who worked the hardest, who tried the hardest? That's just as important as who got the A. So I'm really glad to hear you say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Does anyone want to?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to ask up to the table our athletic director, Larry Rooney. And accompanying Larry tonight is our high school principal, James Jet. So while Mr. Rooney is setting up his presentation, I was going to say this is the face behind all of the emails, but as Ms. Bagley Jones will tell you, Larry Rooney is out and a very, very visible athletic director.
Larry who?
A very visible athletic director.
I was making a joke.
Oh. And Ms. Padera has often mentioned, I think between you and Ms. Padera, the enthusiasm of reinvigorating elementary school students and middle school students at football games and events. I'm very appreciative to build a townwide spirit.
Well, thank you all for having me tonight. There's a lot of exciting things going on within Milton High School athletics with our teams, our student athletes, and certainly something we want to talk to you tonight about is our participation in athletics over the last couple of years. So I'm very appreciative of this opportunity that you've given me to share that with you as somewhat of the new athletic director now in my second year. Our agenda tonight is to go over an athletic overview, which will include our participation numbers, the importance of sports, the budget. Mr. Pavlicek will share a little bit with us about the athletic budget and some fundraising efforts that are going on, and certainly talk about some success and achievements that are happening within athletics. Okay, what we have in front of us here are all the sports teams that are offered by season at Milton High School. And you'll notice each season there's about 10 different sports that are offered. Just to break those numbers down a little bit, in the fall here, we have 10 sports, yet 24 different levels of sports between varsity, junior varsity, and freshman. And that varies from sport to sport, what those numbers are and what's available by gender and by sport. So in particular, we have soccer here. That's both boys and girls. And we have varsity, junior varsity, and freshman soccer. So six teams playing soccer, three each, gender. In the wint- in the wintertime, the numbers are about 10 programs and about 20 different levels. And in the springtime, it's about 11 programs and about 23 different levels. So over the academic school year, we offer over 30 different programs and as close to 60-plus different teams between varsity, junior varsity, and freshman sports. We're always looking for opportunity to increase our participation with many of these sports, but sometimes there are some limitations based upon field availability or ice time availability or court time availability. But we're always looking for that opportunity to do that. The most important thing is that we have had an increase in numbers in a few different sports, such as football, in track and field, in cross country over the last couple of years. So that's, those are some very encouraging numbers. Okay, these next slides we've shared with you in the diversity report over the last year or so, and they go back as far as 2012 and '13, in last year, 2013, 2014, and into this fall season. And a couple of things that stand out with me, that in the fall of 2012, we had over over 400 athletes participating in the fall of 2012, about 340 in the winter of 2012 and '13, and in the spring of 2012, '13, we had about 415 student athletes, of which, that's total participation, of which the minority participation in 2012 and '13 ranged between 26% and 28%, with an increase in winter season, up to about 31.4% of minority participation in winter sports. As we get into the year of 2013 and '14, my first year here, the participation numbers were pretty strong. We had over 400 student athletes participating. Minority participation was just shy of 30% in the fall. Again, increased in the winter, minority participation, sports, just shy of 32%. And there was a big increase in minority participation in the spring of 2013, '14, although the overall numbers were down in the spring of 2013 and '14. We saw an increase in minority participation last spring. And if we look at this current fall season, our numbers are in the 425, 450 range of those that registered to play fall sports, and our minority participation is just shy of 33%. So we do see a consistent increase in participation, both minority and overall participation, which is very important to me. And I think that, I think that lends itself to the importance of athletics, along with academics, that is emphasized here at the high school. This next slide breaks down by race and ethnicity, a three-year view, going back 2012, 2013, to currently in the fall, and the non-minority and minority participation in sports, where we see 2012 and '13, non-minority at 73%, and minority just shy of 27%. And an increase in minority participation last year in 2013, 2014, to just under 30%. And again, this fall, we are just shy of 33% minority participation, which again, is an increase for the fall in minority participation. And the numbers speak to the amount of kids that are participating and the amount of minorities that are participating, which is very important. I see that going in the right direction for our student athletes here at the high school. Any questions thus far on any of those numbers?
Ms. Sheridan?
I wonder how the, and maybe you can't answer this question off the top of your head, but maybe James can. The difference here, so when you look at the non-minority to minority ratio, is that pretty similar to what it is for the school population as well?
It's actually, it's actually a little higher. As of October 1st, the report that we submit to the state, we had about 372 students self-identify as minority, as part of one of the minority groups. And we had 149 students participating in a sport in the fall. That's equivalent to about 40% of the minority population that's enrolled in the sport. One of the things that's not captured on here as well, if you saw the play this weekend, we have students, minority students in the play that may not, the musical, that may not necessarily play a sport. So it's important to say that they're involved in something. And that's what we want to make sure that we provide many opportunities for the students here at the high school.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that? So if you were to, the total population of Milton High School, what are the percentages in terms of non-minority and minority?
I would say about, what was that, 38 you had?
Percent minority.
And keep in mind, it fluctuated slightly from October 1st. You have move-ins. We had well over 29 or 30-something students. You know, I forget the exact number, but I could give that to you.
Okay.
We're going to get you the exact percentage. I know what it is, but before I say it.
Do we know a bit about what the high school number is?
Yes. I have the number. In terms of minority students, 392, I mean, 372 students are minority. And as of October 1st, it was 968 students at Milton High School.
Okay. Thank you.
So as we look here over the last two years, and we've yet to take on our winter sports season, the numbers are pretty consistent with winter sports participation, both non-minority and minority being in the 68 and 31% range, or 68 and 32% range participation. And we like to see that consistency, and if anything, an increase in numbers and an increase in participation with both minority and non-minority.
These next couple of slides talk about our participation in sports with those in financial need, free and reduced lunch, over the last three years, going back to 2012 and '13. And we'll notice that about 13% in the, in the fall and spring, playing sports, were on free and reduced lunch. And that number increased quite a bit in winter sports, going back to just shy, just over 19%. But the great thing is the amount of students that are on free and reduced lunch and the amount of students that are participating in sports, that's pretty high. And even though some of our user fees may be a little bit high compared to our schools within the Bay State Conference, we're still getting our students in need coming out to play sports. And we'll never turn a kid away that wants to be on the field playing sports. We're always going to find a way to have our students participate in sports regardless of their financial need.
Can I just interrupt as you go, Larry? So that I can ask my question about that. I know we can find out how many kids from free and reduced, but the kids who are not at the level of free and reduced, but just go up a little, if they come to you, the parents or the kid, we work out a system for them, a payment plan? Because those are the kids that don't have the free and reduced, but really can't play the three sports, three kids a year at however much that adds up to be, plus the equipment and all that.
Yeah. Great comment. We certainly have. At the beginning of each athletic season, fall, winter, and spring, I get quite a few phone calls and emails from, from parents and guardians asking if we could work out a situation for payment of the user fees. And like those on free and reduced lunch, we've worked out payment programs, whether they can pay on a weekly basis or a monthly basis, if they can pay the full amount at all. We certainly have worked out programs with families to help those in need. And some families have reached out to Mr. Jet. You know, family circumstances have come up, and we've made extenuating circumstances for those families to be able to participate. Again, we'll never turn a kid away that wants to play. And I think that's the most important thing.
Thank you.
Superintendent, and then Ms. Sheridan.
Very briefly, we talked about this today. These lists of students whose families identified as free and reduced are really protected information. But everybody understands that this is a subgroup in the testing, and so it's important for our principals to understand and know who these children are. And so that when we talk about targeted instruction and targeted programming and after-school options, that our principals can discreetly work with these families to encourage them, to encourage the children, to go out and identify the children. And so the head of our food service program, Jackie Morgan, just today, monthly, because life changes every month, is, we give updated lists to the principals. They were issued today via email. I'll follow up with hard copy. And I suggested to Jackie Morgan that, again, families identify with their school principals. And so we're going to start to send weekly, quarterly, or perhaps monthly, but at least quarterly, letters to families co-signed with the principal, because Jackie Morgan isn't a face that everyone might know and identify with. But if a letter goes out asking families if they want to sign up for free and reduced, it has the principal's name, and the families relate to the principal. The letter will encourage families to call the principal, to ask questions about just what that means. So we're going to try to improve our methods for identifying and having families be comfortable about signing up for the, this free and reduced, and the participation that it will enable children, and the lunch program and the breakfast program, that will all directly impact their achievement in school.
Can I ask a question about that?
Anything.
Ms. Sheridan, then Ms. Bagley.
Can I just follow up on that?
Sure.
The guidance folks, keep an eye out for kids that don't meet that criteria so that they can tell you?
I would say a number of people do that, from coaches to teachers. Again, you know, students develop a rapport, whether it's not their advisory teacher, whether it's a teacher, their favorite subject. So whatever the avenue, sometimes it's even Nurse Gibbons. So it could be anyone in the building that they feel comfortable with.
Thank you.
Sure.
Could you please go back to the previous slide? Sorry. So I'm just curious about the 65 students in the winter versus 53 and 55 in the fall and the spring? Just curious, like, do they, if they're free and reduced, are they picking just one sport? Because that's all they can afford? And if they are, you know, is it that the winter sport is more attractive, or are they, you know, are they saving up? Like, I'm just wondering if there's a vehicle, and maybe it's too much information, be sure, feel free to say that to me. But I'm just curious if, you know, if these kids aren't self-identifying, if there's 65 of them wanting to participate in the winter, would they maybe want to do a spring sport too and just don't feel like they can ask?
Well, see, that's kind of deceiving. If you look across the board, you could have, some of our students are three-sport athletes. So they could be in all three sports. Maybe that's just a sport in which they're interested in, that just so happens to take place in the winter.
That's the number of...
Yeah. You know what I mean? So it doesn't mean that, you know, it's in isolation, 53 in the fall, but it's, you know, some of the, some students in a different bucket. You just may have a different interest in the winter, because of the change of the sports.
I wasn't thinking about the total number. You're right. Thank you.
So this speaks to our athletic participation, free, reduced lunch program for this current fall season, and where those numbers are at. 11.6% of our student athletes are on free and reduced lunch. This next slide, again, has been shared with you in the diversity report, and it goes back to the fall of 2013, all of last year. And it's a breakdown by team. And I think, as you look at these numbers, my goal is to increase participation, in particular minority participation, within all sports, but in particular, some sports that we're focusing our attention on is girls' basketball, softball, baseball, and boys' and girls' lacrosse, where we feel as though with some of our athletic department goals, that we could increase overall participation, but specifically minority participation in those sports.
Can you say those again, Larry?
Girls' basketball, softball, baseball, and both boys' and girls' lacrosse.
Thank you.
I'll speak to in a few moments about why there may be a lack of minority participation in some of these sports. But these are the real numbers over last year's athletic participation. There are some challenges, and some of those challenges might be the increased exposure to these sports at the youth level or the grassroots level. The actual cost of these sports for families, as, as kids are in elementary and middle school, some of these sports can be very expensive to be part of, and those are some challenges that families face. So, but it is a goal for us to make sure that we focus our attention on these specific sports to try to increase the minority participation. And here are the numbers from this current fall season. Again, our focus would be on here, boys' cross country and golf, although golf is down in overall participation from last year. We had 12 golfers last year, 2013, and this year we had 10. So it was one of those sports where we did not make cuts. I will say, I looked at the numbers from the previous slide of girls' cross country to the fall of this current year, and the minority participation in girls' cross country went up by six. Not a percentage number, but a actual athlete number, which is, which is a great job by Coach Tom Shaw, by being very inclusive of all the student athletes, in particular, cross Mr. Jet just spoke about...
Okay. Can I just add one more thing that's important to highlight? If you look right here and you look at the category under crew, in 2013, the fall, there were no, no minority participation. Same thing with the winter, excuse me, where am I, the crew? But if you look here, now boys' crew and girls' crew, you're seeing an increase in that. And it goes back to a point that we were making earlier. It's all about the exposure. I had a conversation with someone earlier, and I was just explaining, last year, even with girls' hockey, we had to seek a waiver and reach down to our eighth grade students just to make sure we had enough students to participate to run just the varsity. We didn't even have a JV girls' hockey team last year. So again, our goal is to continue to communicate with the elementary principals, and Mr. Rooney will talk about some of those efforts that he's undertaken, to try to get a lot of students exposed to the participation. And then at the end, when we talk about it, unfortunately, in some of these sports, we have caps as well. Unless, of course, we're going to increase and add more sports or more coaches, we do have caps in, in terms of how many students that could be on a team.
This next slide, Mr. Jet already talked about, is the overall enrollment at the high school as of October 1st. How many of those students identified themselves as minorities, and how many from the fall sports season participated on, on a fall sports team, are registered on a fall sports team? And again, many of the minorities also participate in many other extracurricular activities at the high school, whether it's clubs, our community service initiatives, certainly the arts. So it's, it's important that all of our kids are participating, not just in athletics, but in, in what the high school has to offer. You know, in talking with my coaches and my student athletes, you know, the thing that I say to them as it comes to athletics, are you getting the most out of what Milton High School has to offer? And are you giving back and making Milton High School a better place by playing sports? And whether that's the non-minorities or the minorities participating, participating in athletics, it's important that our kids are taking advantage of what is offered here, and they're making Milton High School a better place through athletics. This just goes back to...
Ms. Keller, sorry.
Sorry, before we go from that...
Sure.
Do we, for, for last year, do we know how many students played one sport or more? So in other words, how many individual students from Milton High School did sports touch? I guess would be another way of putting it, for last year. I think that would be a good number to have, so that we sort of get that sense.
And just so you know, I, we could definitely look at that. You may see that our enrollment fluctuates a little bit here at the high school. We have a pre-K program. I don't know, sometimes that gets factored into our enrollment. And also, we have students who move in and move out. This was the number according to what we got from our, our person that helps us with the data, Jane Barrett, on the, from the first. But we could definitely look into that. We did not do that for this presentation.
Okay. Thanks.
We are keeping better track of all of our students last winter and last spring, but definitely this year, with our administrative plus system, our new Ruder, Redeker system, of what kids are doing on day one in September, fall sports, winter sports, spring sports, right through the four years that they're here at Milton High School. And that's important, because that's part of their transcript, not just how they do in the classroom, but what they're doing outside of the classroom, and what activities and what sports they're taking on.
Yep.
Some of the challenges for our student athletes with participating in sports, I mentioned early, exposure to various sports in town, and the enhancement of middle school sports programs. We're looking to add middle school sports teams, and there's talks going on right now with Dr. Karen Spalding and Superintendent Gormly about the possibility of increasing middle school sports. Skill level sports, so sports that we need to make cuts and those that don't need to or could support a larger group of, of student athletes. That's a challenge. For example, if I remember correctly, from winter sports last year, our boys' basketball program alone had about 75 student athletes trial for three teams. And at the very maximum, each team could take about 15. Well, that adds up to 45, and about 30 kids were cut from boys' basketball. What we've done within athletics here, both through basketball, but myself and other coaches, is we've encouraged those kids to join indoor track, or we've encouraged those kids to participate in other sports offered during that season. So they, they do have a place to go at 2:20 in the afternoon, and they still want to play a sport, and, and we're helping them do that. But there are certain sports that can only take a certain number, and there are other sports that we can expand that number a little bit, such as football in the fall, or cross country, or indoor track in the winter, or outdoor track in the spring. But those are some challenges with cut sports versus non-cut sports. Certainly, transportation can be an issue for families, getting to and from school, to and from practice, to and from games at times. Some of our kids have real family obligations that come ahead of their extracurriculars, such as jobs, or childcare. And again, we hope that all of our kids have interests beyond athletics, that they're participating in, whether it's clubs, or activities, or the performing arts, or visual arts. Something that I've experienced as a father and as a coach, outside club teams have really become popular in a lot of sports. You may have heard the term AAU, which is the American Amateur Union, very popular in certain sports, baseball and basketball, select teams or travel teams. This has really pulled at kids and pulled at families to try to play at elite levels, and taken away the opportunity for kids to play for their high school. And that's a real challenge for people. Some of these sports are very expensive outside of the high school, and to ask kids to play on two teams and then pay for two teams is a real challenge for families. And obviously, the athletic fees that we have and the budget that we have in place can be a challenge as well.
Sheridan?
Could you, I'm sorry, after Lynn. I just want to clarify the transportation bullet there. Are you referring to kids being able to get transportation back and forth to after-school sports, or do you mean the cost of actually transporting them to games?
It's for kids, for some, for some kids, it's transportation to and from practices that's outside of the norm of getting on the after-school bus. Our baseball team practices at Cunningham Park. Our cross-country teams run over at Houghton's Pond. Our boys' and girls' hockey team play in practice at Ullin Rink. So it's those sports that are off-campus, where kids need to get rides, and sometimes that puts a strain on family to get their kids to and from those facilities.
If I might?
Certainly, transportation is a big cost within the athletic department, and, but that's, that's one of our challenges. But, but families certainly have their challenges as well with transportation.
I think that your high school marries your community. And I've said among us in the school district, that this early exposure to various sports is huge, in this town and in society. And so when you see the fields full in Milton for all these different sports, and I don't participate in any of those sports, and I get to the high school, I'm competing against children... high school, I'm competing against children who, since pre-kindergarten and elementary school, had been on the fields, or on the ice, or on these teams. And so, um, we have an individual who's reached out to Larry Rooney and myself, uh, elementary soccer, and he's looking to, um, come up with ways to reach out through our parent liaison, um, to actually reach out to families, uh, and how to get families involved in town sports. I think it's so ironic you put this first, Larry. I think this is a huge issue. I, I personally think the forms are impossible to read, um, and I don't think people get the information, um, through, if they don't get the times. I don't know how people find out about all of these teams and the sign-up, and when to sign up, and what the deadline is. So, um, just seeing athletics at Milton High and, uh, hearing the conversation about all of these teams and having to start when you're so young, I think it's really, uh, incumbent upon the community, uh, to look at these, uh, sports teams town-wide and see if they reflect the diversity and the economic diversity of the town. And, um, I think that there are ways, I can't take on the sports in the town, but I talk to everybody that I possibly can, and we do have somebody reaching out now that wants to work with us at the elementary level about, uh, town-wide sports. But I think it's gonna have a correlation, uh, to participation at the high school, especially when you talk about teams that cut.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. And, um, some ideas that I have or we have, um, to increase participation, both diversity and overall participation in sports, uh, Mr. Jett, if you don't, um, is to build that partnership with our Milton Parks and Rec Department that, uh, head up the youth sports programs in town, in particular, what they call MYSAK or the Milton Youth Sports Advisory Council. One of my goals is to meet with all the leaders of these youth sports organization and see what they are doing about, um, their participation and the minority participation in their sport, um, at the grassroots level, um, right down to kindergarten or grade one, and, and what kind of exposure, um, are they allowing, um, those that might need more resources, um, to, to be able to participate in their sport.
And may I say one more final word on that? And, again, when I talk about the, um, advertisement and the forms and difficult to read, I, I think they're all, um, people who want to, um, diversify the teams, but I think it's just a matter of reaching out and making these sign-ups easier for people, and better publicizing deadlines and options for free and reduced. So many of the people who have led these said to me, "Well, you know, I'm more than willing, um, to make accommodations around free and reduced," but I think it's getting the word out and reaching out to the community.
Ms. Padera, and then Mr. Zulus.
I was just gonna ask, and I know you're talking about your partnerships, which I knew was coming up next, but have you, have you started to look at whether the same reflection that we're seeing here in, um, diversity is the same in the youth sports in the town? Because it would just be interesting to see if this is happening and when, when it's happening, or if it's always been that way, as, um, Superintendent Gormly says, is just they're never getting, some of these sports, if you're trying out in high school, you know, and never played organized hockey before, it's gonna be really difficult to make the hockey team, as well as the basketball team, as well as probably other sports as well like that. So, I'm just wondering if that could be something we look at, is it's reflected the same at some of these sports? And I would, um, I would agree with the sentiment that, you know, we talk a lot about athletic fees here, and, but they're much cheaper than what the youth, people are paying for youth sports is, um, for basketball, for hockey, for all these equipment sports. So, it is difficult, it's expensive, it's also one of these things, you do kind of hear word of mouth, where if your friend's in it-
Mm-hmm.
...and, um, they tell you about it. I mean, there, all the programs in Milton Parks and Rec that send out, but there's even, um, more intense sports outside of Parks and Rec that spec, that help, help kids specialize and get better in other sports, and it really is kind of a parent informational source where you learn it. Um, so, I'm just wondering if we can look, when you're doing through these partnerships, if you look at and see if they have the same problems that we're having, that it's reflected the same from youth to, um, to high school. And then, just the other thing, on the last slide, I was gonna ask, is, it does look, I know we have to make cuts, and, um, it's especially frustrating for me to think about freshmen cut from sports, because it really is, feels like the end, you know? That, that many of them don't come back, even if you tell them, encourage them to work on it, come back sophomore year, they're kind of crushed, and, you know, um, I always think of the little minor trivia that Michael Jordan was cut from freshman basketball team, you know, what if he didn't come back, you know?
Yeah.
So, I think about other avenues of, um, encouraging these kids to, if they're just maybe behind by a year and they need to try harder, but also, do we have any intramural, um, avenues that they can participate in? Cause it's, as much as I like track, not everybody does, and so to say, "Well, why don't you do cross-country?" It's different from basketball, the other sports they're trying out for, and do we have any other avenues we can kind of, um, send those kids to, so they can either maybe perfect their skill or mature a little bit, grow a little bit, um, you know, or is there any way to really encourage, try to take more kids that freshman year when they can have a little room to develop without, um, watering down our programs or overloading our coaches, you know?
Um, great comments, and the question about intramurals, um, I'd love for all kids, if, if they weren't able to make a freshman team, or a JV team, or a varsity team, to continue to play a sport that they love, even if it's at the intramural level. Um, we don't lack gym space, but we'd, we'd lack time and gym space to be able to create another team or program. Um, we, we could always look at it, but it would be difficult to fit into the current winter schedule. That Copeland Fieldhouse is jammed Monday through Saturday with our current, uh, six basketball teams, two wrestling teams, indoor track, cheerleading, um, so to find time. It is unfortunate. Um, I face it right now myself with my own children, in, in whether or not they're gonna be able to play high school sports. And, um, but the great thing that I think Milton High School does have is, is those other opportunities. Um, crew over the last three or four years have become very popular, and some kids that may not have played football or soccer in the fall have won state championships for our crew program. Um, and, um, and those, those kids are training right through the winter and, and participating again in, in the springtime. Uh, our cross-country numbers and indoor track and outdoor track numbers have increased over the last, uh, couple of years, uh, due to encouraging kids to participate in those sports if some of the, uh, team skill-oriented sports didn't work out for them, so.
And if I can add, I know this presentation is about sports participation. There's also clubs, there's also interest, um, again, I have in this conversation as the principal of the high school and the father of two daughters and wanting them to get involved in sports. Trust me, I pushed, I struggled, I threatened, um, and they just didn't like it. They just didn't like it. And one of my daughters was a late bloomer in art, and went into art, and my youngest daughter's into the math and sciences. So, again, it's all, so, part of it is interest-based, and it's tough to push somebody in an area in which they're not really interested in, and then throw three hundred dollars or seven hundred dollars, depending on the sport. So it's, it, it is a challenge. And then the last piece that I add about the, um, intramurals, once the weather gets warm, you'll see a number of students, trust me, it's not for lack of not participating, they're down at the, uh, they're down at the courts, they're climbing the fence, trying to get in the Brookfield, they're in this, uh, field house when they get a, a moment to go and play basketball. Trust me, I go out there and hurt myself and play with them. Um, so, students are in this building, and they are doing something. And some just work out. Some go into the weight room, in the Nautilus Room, which we'll talk about later, to work out.
Can I, Larry, just another thing?
Mr. Zulus, then Ms. Berry.
Just a quick point, um, in terms of early exposure, uh, it seems to me that that's an easily improved item, um, along the lines of what the library and the schools have done in the last few years in terms of coordinating exposure to those younger students. Um, as an anecdote, um, last year, the only reason that my kindergartner was signed up for soccer was I just happened to talk to someone at a principal's event about, and someone mentioned it to me. That's the only way I knew about it. So it seems to me, that kind of coordination that we had with the libraries, with the library, rather, and the schools, something along those lines might help getting more exposure to the, to the younger, newer parents, and, and, uh, that kind of coordination seems to me, that's, that's kind of low-hanging fruit, you know?
Well, Larry and I are attempting to do that now.
And I will say this, as a person who's a football, basketball, and track lover, because of my exposure with girls hockey at the high school, I got a, a passion for it. That is my favorite sport now. And so I would say that to anybody out there that is watching. Again, it's getting out, it's seeing, observing, and it's really growing, having an appreciation for it.
Maggie Jones?
I think that in terms of the Milton Park and Recs, that that's a whole other job for Larry to do. I think it's an important one, but it's a broad-based, it has to be a broad-based appeal. And basically, I would just say to them, you know, what does Walpole do? Because Walpole wins every single game of every single sport that they do.
Right.
Um, right? Am I not right on that?
Almost.
Oh, okay, almost. But most of the times they do.
Not rugby.
They have it, but they have it from day one all the way through high school. But that's, I mean, it's important for us to do that, but that's beyond what you need to do as the athletic director.
Right.
It's gotta be-
I will say this, we have a lot of students, they're about four meters, some students, almost fifty percent of the student population, participating in the sport. And I can't speak to Walpole, I don't know, I'm not sure if Walpole has the diversity that we have. Um, so, participation, again, four hundred, and four hundred, uh, plus students participating in the fall sport, when you have nine hundred and something students, that's a lot.
And then, my other point to just follow up on that was that there are also other economics involved, uh, not just the fee, but your lacrosse stick, your guards, your shoes, basketball, your shoes, um, the sticks that you need-
Golf clubs.
Golf clubs, golf T-shirts you gotta wear on the court. I mean, there's a lot of other economic issues involved-
Sure.
...that we can't take on.
No.
But I do think that that's part of it as well.
Absolutely.
For whatever that's worth.
Sports have become very expensive. I'm, I'm the father of three hockey players, and it's probably the most expensive sport.
Yep.
Spending thousands of dollars a year, uh, to have our kids on youth teams or travel teams, and it's one of the more expensive sports here at the high school as well. So, uh, it's certainly, um, you know, the fees involved, uh, certainly a big challenge for some families. A couple other things that we're doing to in, increase diversity and participation in sports, um, partnering with the Parks and Rec, uh, trying to improve or, um, increase middle school sports programs, um, meeting at the pier school, uh, our varsity coaches and our captains going down and, and promoting Milton High School and Milton High School Athletics. And in particular, um, next Wednesday, we have an eighth grade info night, uh, info morning, uh, where we're, uh, having the eighth graders come up and find out about Milton High School Athletics, clubs and activities. Uh, we're gonna set up tables in the gymnasium and have our team, uh, representatives, team captains be able to talk about their specific programs. Um, so our eighth graders are starting to, uh, think a little bit about where they're gonna be next year and, and what sports might be available to them. Um, our guidance department in athletics as well as the arts, uh, last year did a, did a, uh, college info night, and we brought in some admissions offices from different colleges and universities to talk about being a recruited student athlete or a recruited, um, arts student, and, um, and what that looks like, and we plan on doing the same in the winter. Um, you know, Superintendent Gormly, you talked about, um, families having that exposure to, uh, youth sports and sign-ups, and how difficult and challenging that can be. Before I came on board, um, registrations for some families, um, may have been challenging if they didn't have the resources to sign up, or how to sign up, not just the money, uh, to pay those user fees. And we've been more flexible allowing our students to, um, not encouraging it, but, uh, sign up after a certain date, um, and still participate in that sport, um, of those that have the extra kids playing. And I think that has really done a great job last fall with football, and, uh, certainly this fall with cross-country and, and football and cheer as well. Uh, so we're being more flexible with those families that might not have the resources to sign up, and, uh, that's important to get our kids involved. The facilities that we, uh, play at, uh, you know, we're so fortunate of the Copeland Family Foundation and the support that they give Milton High School. We have a fantastic Copeland Fieldhouse where many of our teams play at, uh, basketball and wrestling and indoor track and cheer, uh, volleyball, um, and, uh, as well as Brooksfield. Uh, we just had, um, Brooksfield newly turfed last year, uh, again, with the support of the Copely, Copeland Family Foundation. Um, right now, our weight room and cardio room, even though Milton High School is still fairly new, um, less than ten years old or approaching our tenth year, um, we have a fundraising effort to up, upgrade, uh, weight room and cardio room. Um, as we look at some of our competitors within the Bay State Conference, uh, you know, like our science lab, or like our classrooms, we need to help our coaches prepare our student athletes off the field, away from games, and it's in the weight room and cardio room that our student athletes need to best prepare, uh, for those contests. Uh, so here are some of the, uh, facilities that our, our student athletes play at around town, and, um, and again, we're very fortunate that we have great facilities here on campus. Some of the, uh, expectations of our, that we have of our student athletes, um, I look at it as an academic and athletic partnership where it's school first and athletics, um, second. And, uh, you know, what goes on in the classroom and what goes on on the athletic fields, you know, it, it helps our kids learn time management skills and organizational skills that carry over both with athletics, uh, and, and academics. And one of the main things that we really talk about with the kids is advocating for themselves, um, as student athletes. If, if one of our students had a question, uh, for his or her math teacher, uh, as parents, we, we certainly would want them to go and talk to their teacher. Well, we expect the same as an athlete, is that if there's an issue that they might have, um, with their role on a team, or a scheduling issue, or, um, you know-
Playing time.
-playing time, anything, um, that we, we expect our students to advocate, our student athletes to advocate for themselves and go and speak to their, to their coach about what that means, and have that open dialogue and feel comfortable enough to do so. Um, Mr. Jett talks about this all the time, and it's very important to me as well, is, is respect for themselves, respect for their peers, and adults and teachers, respect for the school and property and the administration, that these student athletes, uh, they represent themselves, their family, their teams, their school, whether they're playing, or whether they're, um, out in the community on the weekends, that it's very important that they're always, um, representing Milton High School. Um, and that's something that's very important as a student athlete here at the high school. Um-
Next slide. Anything you wanna add to that?
Communication. Uh, I mentioned it, uh, a minute ago, with students advocating for themselves, but, uh, we want our students to be able to have open dialogue with their coaches. Um, and, um, call it the chain of command, but we hope that, along with teaching kills, uh, kids the skills of a specific sport, that we're teaching them how to advocate for themselves, and go to a coach, uh, about different issues that might arise, uh, during an athletic season. And if, if it's an issue that needs to, um, go beyond a coach, that, uh, parents and student athletes feel comfortable enough to come to me as the athletic director, or our principals here in the building, um, to talk about those issues and to help kids work through those issues with their, uh, with their coaches and the role that they play on their team. Also with that is how do we communicate with families? Um, certainly by our email blasts, our phone, um, uh, phone alerts that we send out. Our schedules are all on our athletic headline pages. Uh, we promote athletics in the back-to-school nights and the PTO meetings, certainly parent information nights, the new student orientation at the beginning of each school year. Um, and we have the student assembly coming up, um, on the nineteenth of Oct-, uh, uh, November here. So where, where we promote the athletics. Just a couple of brief points about why we think athletics are so important here at the high school, but in general for our teenagers. Um, when participating in extracurricular activities such as athletics, students' grade point average increase and overall academic experience is enriched. Um, they learn time management skills, organizational skills, leadership skills that carry over into the classroom and later on in life. And when participation, uh, in athletics, students make better decisions around relationships, drugs and alcohol, and with the difficult issues that teenagers face today in society. Um, so, it, it, it's extremely important that our, uh, students in the classroom and out of the classroom- So, it's extremely important that our students in the classroom and out of the classroom are learning these skills, not just to have success while they're here at the high school, but also when they leave Milton High School. We hope not too many, but for some of our students, sports is the hook to keep them here. And I think that's important for us and for those students, that being part of a team is so powerful and that it can help our students be accountable, it can help them own their role in the community, again, learning those life skills of effort, perseverance, dealing with success and failure, and how to be positive role models in the community. Athletics is an extension of the classroom. And for our coaches, it is their classroom by teaching and coaching the sport-specific skills and also the life skills that are needed to move beyond the walls of Milton High School or the fields that our kids play on. So, we see, again, athletics and academics as a partnership here where we're helping our kids learn those skills on and off the field. Mr. Pavlicek, cover our athletic budget and some fundraising efforts that we have.
Well, as you can see from this, this is just a quick summary of our expenditures over the last two fiscal years. Athletics is roughly three-quarters of a million-dollar operation. And it is only partially funded through the general fund. A large portion is from revolving fund, which is our fee collections and so forth, the fees people pay. Student accounts is the fundraising that is done by the various different teams. The Pierce Revolving Fund shows up this year because with, last year, we introduced the Pierce Sports, and so that's a fee collection from Pierce Sports. The Copeland Banner Fund was one from two years ago and noticeable by its absence last year. This is the sales of the banner hanging rights in the fieldhouse and Once Upon a Time along Guile Road as well on the poles. Noticeable last year, we didn't have anyone who was actively renting out those banners, so we saw a drop-off in revenues and we didn't end up actually spending anything out of that account last year because we just didn't have really enough in it to do. I think that most of, that is one thing that jumps off at this. The other piece is the use of the revolving fund, the fees from '13 to '14. There's two pieces involved there. One is at the beginning of fiscal '13, the revolving fund was badly depleted. So, we actually had to use about $30,000 worth of fees that were collected in '13, '14 just to build it up to the spot where we could leave it at the end of the year. So, there was part, about $30,000 worth of fees where, we keep a balance at the end of the year and we had to build that balance up. So, that is actually about spent out of it, not the amount raised. So, really, the jump in the fund from '13 to '14 is we actually raised about $50,000 more in fiscal '14 through fees and the like than we did in fiscal '13. That's partially to do with collections, partially to do with participation, variety of different things like that. It isn't as, as I said, those are expenditures, those aren't revenues. The 313 is actually the revenues from, for last year because in '14, we ended the year with the same balance we started the year with, the same seed. So, $313,000 is approximately the amount we take in through fees, through athletic fees during the year. The year before, as I say, it was about, it was about $270,000 because we had to build up the balance for the end of the years to carry over. So, you know, and the general fund basically makes up whatever's left. So, we just have to find a way to deal with it through the general fund. '14, I think, going forward, is really the model for '15. Hopefully, we can get someone who would like to be a banner salesman and we can, if we have people out there who would like to market our banners, that is a good source of income. I just, the only other thing I'd say on here is the one piece that's not here is the boosters. The boosters are a separate entity. They buy equipment, uniforms, various different things. They make contributions to the clubs, but they don't run through us, they're their own entity. And so, we don't count on them, but they do supplement what the athletic budget does internally.
Kelly?
So, sorry, and I may have missed any of your explanation. The increase is 35K or so? You told me the exact number, I'm sure.
From '13 to '14.
From '13 to '14, and what do we attribute that to?
It's actually, it's closer to $50,000.
Okay. So, what's the additional spending that we're spending that we didn't spend in '13?
We...
This is expenditures, right?
Right. We didn't, we didn't use the, we really overran the general fund in '13 to a significant, the spending in fiscal '13, the $400,000 from the general fund was 100 and something thousand more than we had actually budgeted, 125,000 more than we had actually budgeted from the general fund. So, we had to make some adjustments and, you know, we had to pay up, go over budget in the general fund on athletics just to finish the year in '13.
Right. So, I'm just looking at, these look like expenditures that went out on thirteen versus fourteen. It's a 50K increase, let's say, if that's the number. So, what additionally are we spending the money on in '14 that we didn't spend it on in '13? Because that's a huge jump, I think.
Well, I mean, in, let's see if I can...
And if we don't have the answers now, that's fine.
Well, it's all in one pot, that's the issue. I mean, there's, we spent some coaches, we paid for coaches in thirteen out of the general fund that we had planned on paying for out of the revolving fund, but we didn't have enough money in the revolving fund to do it, so we paid for them out of the general fund.
So, I think you're missing my point. It doesn't matter where the funds came from. Ultimately, we're saying on this sheet, and maybe we need to go back and look at these numbers, it's saying that we spent 50K more in '14 than we did in '13. What I'm looking for is, okay, so what kinds of things were we spending the money on? And again, if we don't have the answers now, that's not a problem, that as we move through the budget process, we can, we can hopefully get that level of detail and figure it out.
We have, you're looking at it from 723 to 766, so you're looking at $43,000 more that we spent on athletics.
Right.
Over the year.
Yep.
Right, which is, which is about 6%. So...
I doubt that was coaches' increase in their rates. I guess I'm just looking for it.
Well, some of it is, we had, for instance, in '14, we had a lot of tournaments. Tournaments cost money, we had to pay for extra buses, there's extra coaches, there's extra security and so forth.
And if that's the answer, I'm just asking the question.
There are a variety of different things like that.
Let's figure out what the...
Coaches' salaries do, you know, coaches' salaries are about $200,000 of the budget, 200 to 250,000 of the budget for all the different coaches. And that doesn't include officials and, you know, police details and things like that for all the different pieces. So, the, a good deal of it is actually salary, you know, not quite half. And so, that does certainly go up, but it's not $40,000 worth. But, it's, you know, probably $15,000 worth of it is just in adjustments to salary over the year. And as I said, the other week, you know, when you have tournaments, there are tournament fees, there are a variety of different things. And also, I think fiscal '14, for instance, we had Thanksgiving Day game. And that's, we only get that every other year, and that's a big gate receipt.
Why don't we work to get a precise answer? Mr. Zulus?
Just a quick one. For fiscal '15, early in the budget process, we were trying to budget an additional 100,000 from the general fund. Do you remember, Glenn, where we ended up on that?
It's in.
Oh, I know it's in, but was the whole 100,000 in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, in fiscal '14, we actually added money during the year by reallocating money. Fiscal '15, we built it in.
We built it in, that's right, okay.
Some of the fundraising efforts that we have in place to help defray the costs of sports and help our teams, and I mentioned earlier about our weight room and cardio room, is we currently have a prize calendar raffle in which our student athletes are selling calendars in the community to help support the renovations of the weight room and cardio room. This goes back to the loss that we all had last fall of Evan Jones and immediately the exercise for Evan that went on fall of '13 and again, fall of '14. One of Evan's goals and legacies that he left was the improvement of that weight room. And we've been very fortunate enough to start with about $15,000 from the two exercise for Evan's events. And we're hoping with this prize calendar raffle that our student athletes and teams are taking on, that we could raise another 40 or 50,000 on top of that 15,000 that we currently have in order to renovate and upgrade that weight room. So, that's a big undertaking that our athletic department and our student athletes are taking on right now.
And if I could just interject, 40 to 50,000 is a lofty goal, so I say for those who out there are watching, make sure you purchase one of those calendars.
Do you have any now to sell?
We'll make sure you have them and we'll make sure there's some in the front office.
And how much are they?
$10 apiece.
Okay.
And you have the opportunity to win cash prizes, prizes such as TD Bank tickets to a Celtics game or to a Bruins game. There's a lot of wonderful prizes on there.
You know, along with selling, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, where can we buy them? Do all the schools have them? Do all the elementary schools have them too?
The elementary schools do not have them. Every sports team with all of the students on the sports, so ideally, the assumption would be, you know, 425 athletes would have at least 10 each.
But tomorrow, we could put them in every front office of the elementaries and the middle school.
Absolutely.
And efforts like this take, you work full-time. So, I'd like you to recognize the three freshman parents who came forward and have taken over responsibility for this fundraising effort.
I had, I had one in particular, but two others join. Freshmen parents approached me last winter, last spring about ways that we could raise funds to help improve athletic facilities and in particular, the weight room and cardio room. One is Amy Domino, who took the lead here. She's been fantastic and very energetic and enthusiastic about getting this going. And along with Amy is Ursula McMillan and Marion Driscoll, again, parents of Milton High School student athletes. And they've been fantastic with really leading this, leading this effort and being out there in the community, asking our, our community for Celtics tickets or Bruins tickets or restaurant gift cards or donations to help support this calendar sales raffle. And without these parents, we wouldn't be where we are today with this effort. So, we're hoping that we have a strong month of November with our student athletes selling these calendars. I really look forward to next September, having our students come back to school in a brand-new weight room and cardio room with new equipment, newly painted, and having our student athletes excited about improving their skills again off the field. But again, it's to the efforts of these three, these three parents and our student athletes throughout the month of November that it's gonna help make this happen. You know, I look at this not just asking our kids to sell calendars for money. I really look at this as a way that the community can come together and improve our facilities. And, you know, whether people in town have children here at the high school, we see the community, the community of Milton come out to our football games, come out to our basketball games, come out to our volleyball games when we're in the playoffs, and they see our facilities. And so, it's more than just raising funds to improve our facilities. It's a nice community builder for our kids and it gets them excited about being part of this community. And it gets them excited about wearing the Milton High School jersey and playing on our sports team. So, we really do hope that this is a successful effort. Some other fundraisers that are always in place, Mr. Pavlicek mentioned boosters, but our boosters does a great job with the bottle and can drive and our car washes throughout the fall and winter and spring. And those raise funds for our individual teams to have money in their accounts to, you know, help with any uniform purchases. So, boosters does a great job. And we're always looking for donations in the community, you know, for these fundraising efforts as well. Couple highlights, many of our teams throughout each season produce Bay State Conference All-Stars. And too many to list on any one slide in any one night, but fall, winter and spring, we have two to three to four, sometimes as many as five, student athletes representing Milton High School as Bay State Conference All-Stars. But there are three in particular, most recently, that we want to highlight. Olivia Taber is a volleyball player who is a Bay State Conference All-Star and just recently was named to the Eastern Mass All-Stars for volleyball. She had a fantastic volleyball career and in particular, senior season. If anybody had a chance to go to the Milton versus St. Peter Marion game, she was dominant out there. So, Olivia, great job. Lloyd Hill, in Ben Kelly's short time as golf coach, he represented Milton High School in the MIA golf tournament, shooting a par 71 at the regionals qualifying him for the MIA tournament. Last week, he finished 21st out of 38 in the state, which is quite an accomplishment for one of our golfers. And Lloyd is a three-sport athlete here at the high school, three-sport captain, represents Milton High School very well. And I think it could be our first and only All-American. Last year, Jonathan Carrera, wrestler, finished sixth in the country at Lehigh University in the high school national wrestling tournament. And again, we don't know if we have any other All-Americans in other sports, but he certainly is the first wrestling All-American to represent Milton High School. Quite an accomplishment for one of our alumni. Jonathan currently is at Wyoming Seminary Prep School and has been accepted to the Naval Academy to wrestle in the year of 2015, 2016, his freshman year. So, we hope to have Jonathan back this winter at some point to help celebrate his All-American Some support systems that we have in place for our student athletes, our guidance department, we have the college planning process along with myself and our coaches. Guidance does a great job with helping our student athletes navigate, you know, through the college process. Our coaches meeting with, here at Milton High School and within the Bay State Conference is a great resource for our student athletes. Our Legends Athletic Directors within the Bay...